Chairman Phillips is not with us this evening. So at this point, I would ask for nominations for Chairman Pro Tem for the night.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Gary Fortier.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Move nomination cease.
Nomination cease, all those in favor of the nominated. All opposed? Ananamous? Thank you. All right. Number two is Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll stand to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, Rules of Order. We run under Robert's Rules of Order and other rules that we adopt at our organizational meeting each November. I would ask that anybody with a cellphone or pager make sure it's silent or off. Number four, adoption of the Eldredth City Council minutes from the following meetings, April 17, 2017, regular meeting, which is being asked to be tabled, May 1, 2017, special meeting. It's your pleasure.
April 17, move to table, Mr. Chair.
Move in second to table, all those in favor? May 1?
Move to adopt the minutes of May 1. Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions.
I may have missed that.
Five, City Manager's report. Manager Cole.
A few items. First, Harbor Park opened today, and with the looks of the weather forecast, somebody may actually want to get into the water this week. And along those lines, the Splash Pad will be opening at Milton Park on Memorial Day. Looking forward to some good weather there, too. Want to thank the volunteers who showed up for the Card Brook cleanup on Saturday. It had been rescheduled from the previous Saturday, about 25 volunteers helped, and along with the support of the generous sponsors, made that a success. Also, there will be a free disposal cleanup week. Just take your items to DMJ Waste Facility during the week of May 22 to May 27. Go to the city's website or Facebook site if you need more information. There will also be a Branch Lake Public Forest Cleanup Day on Saturday, June 3, being organized with the city with the cooperation of Frenchman Bay Conservancy. If you would like to volunteer to help out with the cleanup, please call Eileen Bader Hall at the Frenchman Bay Conservancy at (422) 2328. And those are the items I have today. Mr. Chair.
One point of clarification, Manager Cole, the cleanup week is for residential, non-commercial accounts?
Correct.
And they have to show proof of residency?
Residency.
Okay. Questions for the manager? Committee reports. Any committees met in the last month that need to report? Citizen comments. This is the part of the meeting where we entertain citizens to get up the podium for three to five minutes to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda. State your name for the record and have at it.
Hello, I'm Mary Blackstone. I'm a member of the Eldredth Garden Club, and I'm here to make sure that City Council is aware of an initiative that the club has undertaken. In its 85-year history, we've undertaken three green plans for the city of Eldredth. The most recent one was in 1980, and in January, we launched a public forum to begin another green planning process, as reported in the Eldredth American. That was very, very well attended, with a lot of interest in the process, a lot of diversity in the group, a variety of neighborhoods, ages, genders represented in the group, and a great deal of interest in volunteering to participate in the planning process. We received a number of written submissions, emails, phone calls. So there was a good level of interest in that. As a result of that meeting, we set up a steering committee, which is a bit different from the way in which the club has operated in the past. We're grateful to have a number of partners in this process, particularly grateful to have representation from the city of Eldredth, Councilor Gary Fortier, and Michelle Gagnon, the planning person for the city of Eldredth. We're happy to have a number of other organizations interested in participating, the Frenchman's Bay Conservancy, Heart of Eldredth, I think Cara Romano from Heart of Eldredth sits on the committees here this evening with me. A number of other organizations, including the Down East Salmon Federation, are represented, and a number of other organizations, another, a number of individuals who are volunteering their expertise to participate in the process. We received a pretty clear mandate from that initial meeting consultation with the public that there was a real interest in a planning process that would ultimately make Eldredth a model green community. And I think you should have in front of you a handout that I prepared to provide a bit more detail than I can orally here. But the scope of this green plan is quite different from the scope that we have had in the past, back in 1980. As you might appreciate, a green plan in 2017 means something a lot different to citizens of the community today. So we have six major areas that we will be reviewing, and over time, we'll come back to council to make sure you're aware of what we're doing and how we're progressing. We have a timeline of probably around 18 months. That's what we're giving ourselves to do research, to do educational programs for the community, and to identify action and what, who's responsible for implementation, as well as the funding that will make that possible. Along the way, we're also initiating small steps so that there is actually action happening as the planning is going forward, action that will hopefully engage the community in the whole concept of creating a model green community. One of those small steps that will perhaps involve council initially is some research that we did on an ordinance that was passed in 1991. It's on the back of your, of your handout. And that's a city tree ordinance that was put in place, but seems to have lapsed, as far as we know, in terms of setting up the related commission and developing a plan. So we're hoping to work with the city folks to perhaps revise and rejuvenate this tree ordinance in the, in the future. So that's what I have tonight, and I hope we'll be back to let you know more about what we're doing as time passes on.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Blackstone? Thank you very much. Any other citizens' comments? Moving on, presentation of awards. We have none this evening. Consent agenda, we utilize the consent agenda. The three items on tonight will be enacted in one motion unless the city councillor wants to remove one and discuss it. So we have item number nine, Council Order 051700, request to the Deputy Treasurer/Tax Collector to accept payments on tax-quiet time-share units per the attached spreadsheet and authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Agenda 10, Council Order Number 051701, acceptance of Jonathan Mahon's resignation from the Recreation Commission with a term to expire on June 30, 2018. Item 11, Council Order 051701 dot 1, request to the Human Resources Committee to appoint John DeLeo as an alternate one, planning board member, with a term to expire 0630, 2017. Any council member want any of those taken off? If not, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to accept consent agenda, items number nine through 11 as presented.
Second. Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Now, we've got a long list of public hearings for licenses. I'd ask anybody that has a comment on any of them, don't delay. When I ask for public comment, jump, or else we'll breeze right through these. First one is Finn's Irish Pub Incorporated, DBA Finn's Irish Pub, 156 Main Street, for renewal of a city class B license, amusement, victular, and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, vinous liquor license. Any staff issues on any of these licenses? Any questions of council? Public hearing is open, any public comment on Finn's request? Public hearing closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move to accept the application of Finn's Irish Pub.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Next one is The Mex Incorporated, DBA The Mex, 191 Main Street, for renewal of a city class C license, victular and liquor, and renewal of a class restaurant, a state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. Any questions of council? Public hearing open, any public comments? Public hearing closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Move approval of the Mex's request for licenses.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Next one is Eldredth Number One LLC, DBA Hampton Inn, Eldredth, 6 Down East Highway, for renewal of a city lodging license. Any questions of the applicant? Public hearing is open, any public comment? Public hearing is closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval for Hampton Inn for renewal of a city lodging license.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Eldredth RI LLC, DBA Eldredth Romada, 215 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. Any questions of the applicant? Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Eldredth RI LLC.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second, discussion? All those in favor? Brian Langley, DBA Union River Lobster Pot, 8 South Street, for renewal of a city class C license, victular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. Questions of the applicant? Public hearing is open, any public comments? Public hearing is closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of relicensing Union River Lobster Pot.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Crestwell Investments LLC, DBA Airline Brewing Company, 173 Main Street, for upgrading the current city class C license, victular and liquor, to a city class B license, victular, liquor, and amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant class 3 and 4 malt and vinous liquor license. Do we have a representative from Atlantic Brewing, since this is an upgrade?
No, the upgrade is actually on amusement, which can be issued internally.
Okay.
The liquor and food is same as last year.
Okay. Any comments on the application? When you're upgrading, you kind of look at success, so that's good. Public hearing is open, any public comment? Public hearing is closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval for licensing with additions to Airline Brewing Company.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Dana Cassidy, DBA Colonial Inn, 321 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. Any questions or comments from council? Public hearing is open, any public comments? Public hearing is closed. Councilor, remember, this was three months ago, so the expiration of this license should be nine months from now. We're not giving them extra time, we're just giving them this license, and I think the paperwork shows that. So, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Shimbashi Incorporated, DBA Shimbashi Restaurant, 139 High Street, for renewal of a city class C license, victular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. Any questions from council? Public hearing is open, any public comment? Public hearing is closed, council action?
Move approval of Shimbashi Inc.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Primavera Restaurant, 186 High Street, for a new city class C license, victular and liquor, and a new state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. Do we have a representative from Primavera? In your name?
Virginia M. Scott.
Thank you, welcome. Any questions of the applicant?
I have one question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
When are you opening?
They're hoping to open Memorial, Memorial Day weekend.
It sure adds a different face to the street. Very nice.
It's obvious that the inside isn't ready for a final inspection or occupancy permit. So the way we usually historically do these is approve the licensing, but they don't get a CO until all the signatures are done. That way, they can get processing through Augusta and get all that stuff done and be Any more comment from council? Public hearing is open, any comments from the public? Public hearing is closed, council action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval for the new license for Primavera Restaurant.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? There, through those. Agenda 13, public hearing in action on proposed amendments to the Eldredth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Taxi Cab Ordinance. Who's presenting this? Chief, please.
Good evening, councilors. We have proposed a couple of minor changes to the taxi cab ordinance, and the motivation behind these is, in the recent past, this past year, we had some extreme difficulty getting the taxi service to comply with the requirement of us to inspect the cab. The inspection is done simply as a, in addition to the state inspection, we're not really looking at the mechanical issues of the vehicle, but it's more or less the appearance, the, you know, some minor, whether the doors work, the windows work, those type of things, to ensure the safety of the commuting public, the traveling public, who are going to be hiring these folks to drive them around. So built into the ordinance, we set some parameters as to a timeframe when they're required to get these taxis inspected, and in addition to that, we also beefed up the fines, if you will, if they don't comply with the, with the inspection requirement.
Questions of the chief? Does this pertain to any taxi operating, picking up in Eldredth, or licensed in Eldredth?
It's only the licensed, there's ones that are licensed in Eldredth, to do business in Eldredth.
Further comments?
Other, other than the ones licensed in Eldredth, you don't have much authority over taxis from away?
Yeah, we don't have any control over those that would, like, bring folks from the airport, let's say, and deliver them here to Eldredth. It's only the ones that do business, pick up, delivery, all within the confines of Eldredth that have the licensing through us, that we have the ability to dictate any such inspection
There's no further comments from council? Public hearing is open, does any member of the public wish to comment or ask questions on the taxi cab ordinance? Public hearing closed. Counsel, what would be your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, just one question through you to the chief.
Yes, sir.
This is pretty much what you vetted through the Finance Committee, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, and there hasn't many changes since then?
No, we, well, no, we did ensure that the wording would encompass a new vehicle. If someone, if, if a taxi cab company were to introduce a new vehicle, as soon as that vehicle would be licensed, they would be required to get that vehicle inspected. And the wording falls under the chief or his, police chief is designated for inspection whenever the police chief or designated so requires. So that would cover, so when the person comes to, to license that vehicle as part of their existing fleet, if you will, either replacing it or adding a new vehicle, then they would be told that they need to get that vehicle inspected before their license, that vehicle would be qualified under their license.
Good, thanks.
Chief, I assume that a police officer will do the inspection?
Yeah, we've, it's another change that we made actually last year, where we've actually come up with a vehicle compliance report, which is attached to the ordinance, and so that simplifies, so any officer within the agency can go out and do this vehicle inspection, and all the vehicles are held to the same standard, and if they pass, if they don't pass, then they are expected that they would bring, that vehicle would be out of service, and they'd have to fix whatever corrections, say a window won't roll down, or something of that nature, get it repaired, bring it back, and then, again, anyone can go out with this form and do the inspection, and they'll get the same, you know, be held to the same standard.
How many taxis are operating in Eldredth, you know?
Well, we currently have three different companies in existence, two of which are very small, only have one vehicle apiece, and then one which is larger, I think they're currently hiding eight vehicles, eight within their fleet. And again, there again, that's where we had, we ran into some complication, where they had so many vehicles arranging for someone to be available to inspect them, and then get the vehicles to us for inspection, which is why we're kind of tightening that ring and making it a specific date, time, and week when they have to have it done.
Is there a charge that you make?
We don't charge for the inspection, they pay a licensing fee. Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? We've had the public hearing, we've had the comments, so we ought to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I move to approve the amendments as presented to the city of Eldredth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Taxi Cab Ordinance, with an effective date May 15, 2017, and I'd like to add to notify all taxi operators in a timely fashion.
Motion in the second, further discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Number 14, public hearing in action on Council Order 051702, the Eldredth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2018. Superintendent Higgins is in the room, if you need anything, or we can let him sit out back.
Or just move rejection?
If, if you'd like, if you can come up there and tell us you found another $300,000?
In cuts.
Or additions.
Good evening, Mr. Manager, members of the council. No, I have not located an additional $300,000 in reductions. But I'm happy to provide the information that you would like. Presentation, answer questions?
We had a very in-depth presentation, week and a half or so ago, for the public knowledge. We invited Superintendent Higgins to last Friday's Finance Committee meeting, had another discussion on the budget. So here we are tonight. I guess I've got to ask, how much of this do we have to read into the record, and how much of it can we pass with a single vote?
If you're asking me that, Councilor Fortier?
Well, I've been here a while, but it's the first time I've done a budget for Eldredth School Department since we got back into it, so I want to make sure we do it right.
I believe we had a discussion that was similar to this a year ago at this time. From my understanding, the articles that are listed in your supporting materials are the articles that you should take action on this evening.
So that would be City Council Order 051702. Counsel, any questions of the superintendent? If not, I will open up the public hearing and allow the public to ask questions of The end result of this will be local appropriation grand total after a dull education, a 3.15% increase. Correct?
That is correct, 3.15% increase, local appropriation on a budget that increases overall in terms of expenditures of 1.57%.
So as we sit here, well, if there's no public, public hearing is closed, so we can frame the motion in an appropriate way. I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on which option this council is comfortable with on excess funds coming from the state. Last year, we required those to be used to offset taxation. This year, once again, the school department through Superintendent Higgins has requested authorization to expend those to pick up some of the things that they cut out of this Yes, sir.
Counselor Fortier, may I clarify the school department's request?
Absolutely.
Certainly, if we are fortunate enough to receive additional funding from the Department of Education through the state subsidy formula, the school department is requesting that there be consideration given to using one of three options, or any combination thereof. One of the options would be to expend any additional state subsidy funds on items that we would like to include in our budget proposal. Second option would be to use those, excuse me, those funds to reduce the local appropriation. And a third option would be to place any of those funds into a council-approved reserve. I believe the conversation that we had Friday morning, certainly from our perspective, we're all looking at putting money into a reserve, we would prefer to see consideration given to using the two options of expending some of the funds to put some items back into our budget, and using some of those funds to reduce the local allocation to taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like Superintendent Higgins' suggestion to have the council look at sharing the additional state funds, if there are any available, between the school department and the reduction of, of our taxation.
I can support that.
Yeah.
What number, are we going to hit, 50/50? What number, are we going to hit fifty fifty?
I think we wait and see what the amount is.
Okay.
You don't have to make that decision tonight?
No.
No, that's correct. You don't have to make a decision tonight, and certainly we don't know the amount, if any, of those additional funds.
Right.
Certainly, we welcome a conversation with our school board and with the council at such time as we determine those figures.
It's been quite a few years since we've gotten together as a big group, hasn't it?
That would be nice.
Be good to maybe have a little budget audit overview and get together for a meeting.
I believe we did do an audit overview last year.
Yeah. Counsel, is any more discussion?
Well, just one note that probably any, in, any money that's coming out of the state is probably going to be earmarked for tax, local tax reduction. So I mean, this, just so that everybody understands that we're putting some of it back into the schools, or potentially putting some of it back into the schools. You know, after that, the state says it's going back to, you know, to offset local taxes. Just, just so it's known.
Am I clear what you mean?
If there's any money coming out of the state, it's going to go through the process and it's going to be labeled monies to reduce local taxation.
So why do we have choices?
Because we get a choice of what to do with it, even though they're saying it's going back to reduce taxation. Isn't that usually the way it happens, Bob? Yeah. So I mean, it's one way that they have.
Well, if it all goes into the school, it still reduces taxation. If it all comes back here, it reduces taxation, so.
And as far as comments, you know, I think as everybody sits up here, would like to see budgets go down. They never do. There are always increases. Been here a long time and I don't think I've seen very many that ever went down. But we get handed more and more stuff that we have to do, more and more mandates that we don't have money for. Every, every rule that comes out of Augusta or Washington falls on a local heads sooner or later. I think a one point five seven percent increase is very reasonable.
May I add to that? I appreciate your comments. I would also add a thing that over the past couple of years, as a school department, we certainly have the same types of mandates that are handed to us that we are required to comply with. We've also, in complying with those mandates and continuing to provide the appropriate level of services to our students, we've been able to streamline our operation a little bit to meet with our enrollment and become as efficient as possible. So I think it's a combination of a reasonable request for an increase, being as efficient as possible with our budget and complying with some items that we didn't necessarily ask for.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
I've had this budget, I've had the budget in my hand for a couple of weeks now. I've gone through it sideways, left to right, upside down, down to up. And I agree with Counsel Abitham, I think it's a very responsible budget. A one point five seven percent increase in the budget was much better than what I was anticipating. And if you look at the overall increase of the local appropriation of three point one five percent versus there, it's, that's twice of what there increase is. And thank you, Augusta, for that. It's, we do our job here and we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. As far as I'm concerned, they don't do it down there. And we pay for it.
Anything else? Entertain the motion, if anyone's got one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the school budget as proposed. Do I have to make a separate recommendation or?
Give the council order number.
Yeah, if you include the council order number, should cover it all.
For City Council Order number zero five one seven zero two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel cross?
Just wondering, Mr. Chairman, would you accept an amendment that we add the proviso that we just talked about? That if there's additional funds, are we just accepting everything that's in front of us, carte blanche?
Yeah, that's what I wasn't sure, if I had to do that separately.
I'm not sure either, I'm just, I'm asking if the chair wants to make a judgment or the superintendent?
My perspective on that is you have that listed and included all under Council Order oh five one seven oh two.
So it gives us latitude to make the choices?
The way it's worded provides for the authority to exercise any of those three options singularly or in combination.
Didn't want to have to come back and read it, so I'm fine with that.
Well, he's been here three times and it's gone down half of those times, so maybe if we make him come back again.
Three times charm. Good work.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Thank you very much, we appreciate your support of the schools.
Thank you, good job.
And may I make one closing comment? Just like to remind people that, you know, with your approval, this is a budget that goes before the voters at referendum on June thirteenth. And we would recommend that all of our citizens please exercise their civic responsibility and come out and vote.
And we've got a big deal going on that day. You can get your senior lifetime pass to the National Park Service from nine to eleven, right here at Ellsworth City Hall, for ten dollars.
That's a deal you can't beat.
I can't. But you've got to be sixty-two and over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Higgins. Number fifteen, Council Order zero five one seven zero three, request the IT Systems Administrator to modify the terms for Dobbs Productions' use of PEG channel two. And all of a sudden, he'll appear from my right.
Mentioned his name and he appears, it's magic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, sir.
This is basically a little housekeeping. The original approval for Dobbs Productions to use the PEG channel was restrictive to him getting a lease, period. He really only needs a lease to broadcast commercial content, which would have been the Acadia Channel. So he would like to get moving with the public access piece now. So I'm basically coming to you to allow him to do that. It looks like Spectrum's not going to allow the lease anyway, but he's not willing to give up just yet. So I think we leave the March piece alone, allow him to broadcast Acadia Channel if he gets the lease. But otherwise, this will allow him to move forward now with public access.
Let's go.
I might add at no cost to the City of Ellsworth.
There's no cost, sir.
I take it we're going to repurpose our channel five?
It's, that is likely what we will do.
Equipment to go to channel two.
We will take, we will use the equipment that's broadcasting channel five currently to broadcast channel two.
Because that's the simulcast of what we're broadcasting on seven?
Exactly, it's a mirrored image of channel seven right now, so there's, we wouldn't have to purchase equipment, you know, to bring on channel two.
Question, the IT Systems Administrator. Make note that we all got an email in our inbox today from one constituent that is unhappy with this. Anyone from the public want to speak? No public hearing required, so what's counsel's size on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the request of the IT Systems Administrator to modify the terms for Dobbs Productions to utilize PEG channel two, allowing Dobbs Productions to use PEG channel two for non-commercial public access content effective immediately. Commercial content will continue to be contingent upon Dobbs Productions securing a lease with Spectrum Cable. All of the aspects of the original approval from March two thousand seventeen are unchanged.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous. Thank you. Council Order zero five one seven zero four, request of the IT Systems Administrator to adopt a new cable TV public access policy.
So I'm here to ask you to adopt a policy. This will govern, essentially governs the content and our operations of PEG channel two. The policy I'm bringing to you is actually basically the policy that Bar Harbor uses and has used for several years with very few changes. Has been reviewed by the city attorney and he is good with it. I don't, I assume you've all had a chance to read it. I don't know if you have any questions or concerns with what I brought.
I have one question. Is this something that you really want to take a bite of as far as you being the person that reviews the technical and quality, content quality? Or do you think it's time to get a TV cable commission back up and running?
We'll see how it goes.
Okay.
I think we see what the demand is, what the volume is. Bar Harbor's had, you know, two or three requests, I'm told, in the past several years. So I don't know if we'll be different or not. It'll depend on the demand.
Fair enough. Questions of the IT System Administrator?
Is this going to cost us anything?
No.
Move to approve the request of the IT System Administrator to adopt a cable TV public access policy and associated forms.
Second.
Move and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Seventeen, Council Order zero five one seven zero five, request the city manager to approve naming the new entrance road to the Ellsworth High School as LeJock Street.
Councillors, as you know, we're in the process of constructing a new entrance road up to Ellsworth High School. That road should be open shortly after the Fourth of July, which means, looking ahead, we need a name for the street and need to order that signed in advance. I've put forth the recommendation that the new entrance road be named LeJock Street, the suggestion of Counselor Moore, a former history teacher at Ellsworth High School. Counselor Moore has shared the history with me and others about LeJock, who was a prominent Native American who welcomed the new settlers to the Ellsworth Settlement. And apparently, the prior street to the former Ellsworth High School was also LeJock Street. So this would be recapturing both some relatively recent history as well as part of Ellsworth's distant history. I would certainly defer to Counselor Moore, who knows the history of this much better than I do.
He basically told the whole story.
I did, all right. I listened well. I listened well, counsel, you must have been a good teacher.
Oh, yeah.
He was a good teacher.
Had fun.
I just want you to make.
Anyway, this LeJock was one of several Native Americans who either were, had already been living in this area or who came to this area shortly after the first settlers came in here after seventeen sixty-three. And in the case of LeJock, he was a, he and another close ally were trappers, hunters and so forth. Lived out a lot of, up toward Branch Lake, I think, in that area. But moved around quite a bit in their, in their work. And his, probably his claim to fame involved a rescue. It seemed that a young girl, whose name was Rebecca Maddox, went out picking berries one day, along with her dog, Spot. And, I don't know. And she became lost. The terrain began to look unfamiliar, she made some wrong turns. And she'd been missing for several days. And the, the parents and the other townspeople began to fear the worst. Well, LeJock was out looking for something to shoot. And he saw the dog and he recognized the dog, because he'd been in and around Ellsworth quite frequently. So he followed the dog back and found the girl, and she had hurt her foot or something, and she was very tired and tired of weeks. So he helped her back to his camp, and he and the other Indian brought her back to Ellsworth. And of course, the people of Ellsworth are very excited, and he'd a lot of praise on LeJock. But the local Indians generally were considered to be helpful and friendly. And as our city manager mentioned, and I personally wondered at the time, why in the world was the street going through Ellsworth High School named LeJock Street? Now I know. That's why I think the new street through Ellsworth High School should be.
And on a more mundane note, I have run this by the city assessor and the fire chief. And the road name is acceptable from a nine-one-one standpoint?
Have you run this by the school superintendent who's got an out order all new stationary?
I have not, but he'll have to order regardless of the name. I assume there'll be one LeJock Street.
No, you've got to leave, you've got to leave room every fifty feet going up, there's a different number. And you've got to leave room for the ice skating arena to get in ahead, so. Name and conventions, every fifty feet is a new number, I believe, that. Maybe we can stretch it out and it'd be two ninety-nine LeJock Street, instead of two ninety-nine State Street.
Or number it in reverse.
Yeah, a little wider. Any other comments from the city council? Counsel Blanchett?
As warm and fuzzy as Counsel Moore's story is, on the surface, I have no issue with LeJock Street. It's part of Ellsworth's history. But in two hundred some odd years of Ellsworth's history, I'm sure that we have a whole lot more. I'm disappointed that something like this couldn't have been put on our website or on our Facebook page for just public input. Just what the public had for ideas of street names, preferably more than four letters.
It's five.
Right, but I was, it's the four-letter ones I didn't want to get from the public. I just, this could have been a fun thing. And to have the council just say, okay, this is going to be the name of it without some fun public input. Hey, we could have learned some great history in this, in this arena.
Well, thank you very much.
Any other counsel of wavering? If not, we'll accept the motion.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the request the city manager to approve the new entrance road to the Ellsworth High School as LeJock Street.
Second. Got a motion and multiple seconds? Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Blanchett opposed?
I would like to add, Mr. Chairman, that at least LeJock had been in the area. Oliver Ellsworth has never been here, so I'm going to consider that, maybe rename the city.
Good point.
LeJock.
LeJock City.
I don't know if I want to go there.
Number eighteen, Council Order zero five one seven zero six, request of the city manager to pave Bridge Twin Road at an estimated cost of thirty-nine thousand dollars. Manager calls.
I'm requesting that the council authorize the use of available local roads program monies for the paving of Bridge Twin Road. The background on this is the developers of Bridge Twin Estates, Bridge Twin LLC, is currently before the, or has been before the planning board. And they're going in for final approval, I believe, in June. And they're proposing a second phase of this subdivision. For whatever reasons, when the first phase was done, the base coat was applied to the existing road. Money was put into escrow for a three-year period for the city to put in the finished coat, but the finished coat- But the finish coat never was laid and the money lapsed. So here, ten years, approximately ten years later, the second phase is being contemplated. And given that heavy construction equipment would be going over that first phase to construct the second phase, it makes sense to bring up Phase One to city standards and apply the wear coat on the road. The developer or the owners of Bridge Twin LLC have offered to provide the original twenty thousand dollars that lapsed a few years ago. But the cost with a decade of inflation now of applying it is thirty-nine thousand. So I'm proposing that the council authorize the use of nineteen, approximately nineteen thousand dollars out of available local roads money to match that twenty thousand dollars, to provide that final coat at an estimated total cost of thirty-nine thousand dollars. I would also suggest that given we have an existing arrangement with lane construction, that we add it to their spring paving schedule. This will allow us the convenience of, of tagging on to that contract and also allow us to do this in a timely manner so the developer can get in this summer or fall and punch in that second road. So that's the proposal and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions of the manager?
So do I understand, Mr. Chairman, that this money will come from the local roads program, the present fiscal year?
Correct. Correct.
Not being a, a roads guy.
He does pretty good, doesn't he?
Me neither.
Oh. The equipment that will be going in there to build the second phase, that will be going in on the current road or on the road after a new pavement is in place?
After, after the finish coat is put on. That'll be a condition, otherwise we're going to propose the use of a surety bond to protect the, the road because it, it hasn't been brought up to a city standard, this would negate the need for that. And it would be like any other city road in the, in the community. And they certainly would be able to go over it to do construction.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on what he said. So we put the new pavement on. They are still responsible for damage to the road? When the big machines go over it?
I, I don't know that there's any additional liability above and beyond anyone using a city road to, to traverse it for heavy equipment, but. So we were discussing a surety bond only if it was the, just the original basin, which is a, a non-standard road.
I was thinking, over, you know, apart from standard travel.
Right.
If the sides of the roads were damaged.
Yeah.
Making the new road.
Right, a standard road should be able to hold up normal construction equipment, which happens every day in the community. I don't anticipate a problem.
Well, you were a transportation guy, so, yeah.
But we wouldn't require anything of them that we wouldn't require of anyone else.
Yep.
It's just the fact that the road today is one, about one and three quarters of an inch of pavement. And putting that final coat on there will, will make it, you know, standard, traversable.
And I had that same conversation with the manager last week.
Yeah.
And he informed me that the one and three quarters with the finish coat on top, it has a much higher percentage possible of main, of living through this construction.
Yeah.
Than just the inch and three quarter, which we'd have to go in, grind down, reclaim and be three inches of pavement, so.
Yeah, and, and again, I would add that this type of equipment goes over our roads in the city all the time. If you're building a new home, bring in the cement truck, which are probably on an axle weight basis, about as heavy as anything, so. I don't want to overdramatize the Phase Two construction, but I don't think that it's prudent to go forward without bringing the road up to a city standard first.
And that twenty thousand donation from the developer can disappear? And we'd be stuck with the whole thirty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
That's why this is contingent upon receiving that.
And they will not be able to go forward with their second phase until this is done or there'd be a surety bond on it, so.
Any other question, comments for the manager? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Not, council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Authorize the use of approximately nineteen thousand dollars from the local roads program as the city's portion of finished paving for the Bridge Twin Road, subject to receipt of a twenty thousand dollar contribution from Bridge Twin LLC.
Excellent, yeah.
Oh, and then, and increase the city's paving agreement with lane construction from an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand to accommodate the project.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, further discussion? If not, all those in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Number nineteen, council order zero five one seven zero seven requests the city manager to negotiate heating, fuel and propane prices and to execute necessary agreements on behalf of the city council. Manager Cole.
I've been working with deputy city manager slash finance director. We've been watching fuel prices. Our energy advisor has been telling us that perhaps the optimal time to lock in a contract may be coming soon. Given the fact that prices fluctuate quickly, in fact, you, if you get a, if you get a good price, you've gotta lock it in within a twenty-four hour period. We're requesting that you authorize the city manager to negotiate a price and execute an agreement so as to take advantage of optimal pricing. Certainly, we would consult with the members of the finance committee and the council chair before doing anything, but really, this needs to be taken care of and market conditions would seem to indicate that, you know, the time to act is in the fairly near future. And I, I don't know if the deputy city manager has anything to add to that?
And if the, and if the price goes up, it comes out of, well, bulk checks?
Well, that'll get you a week or two of fuel.
Want you to fill their tank.
I would add that our number two price last year, I believe, was just under one fifty-nine a gallon. Does that sound about right? One fifty-eight seven. And propane, we were around ninety-two. Ninety-two-nine. And we're hoping to, you know, get in that vicinity, if not even perhaps slightly better.
Any questions of the manager or the deputy CM? Slash finance director?
Did we lock in last time for only one year? Or did we? Before that, was it two years? Wasn't there one point here recently where we locked in for two years?
It would have been before.
I know we had discussed it.
I believe they've kind of rolled it over. They allowed it for another year, I think it was an extension.
Is that it?
Yeah, I, I can't imagine the vendor we're using right now and the profit margin over rack that he gives us, that he can afford to park a truck out here idling and dump eight hundred gallons. He's not making a lot of money.
No.
We've been very fortunate and the school department has piggybacked onto us, so. No further comments, what's the council's desires?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the city manager to negotiate heating, fuel and propane prices and to execute necessary agreements on behalf of the city council.
You can do it.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Council order zero five one seven zero eight requests the deputy city manager slash finance director to award a contract for lawn treatment services. Ms. Mo?
So recently, we've had some multiple concerns expressed by, by residents about our use of chemical applications on city lawns. For as long as I can remember, we've been using Green Thumb to apply fertilizers, insecticides, weed control applications. The council requested me to research some different companies that would provide some more environmentally friendly applications that would also be aesthetically pleasing, so we'd have a good quality lawn. We sent an RFP out to four companies, we received two back, one from Green Thumb as well as Natural Lawn, Natural Lawn Service. I, in your packet, I provided company information, some product information and price comparison spreadsheets for your review. There was some price difference, but it wasn't significant.
Anybody have questions at the deputy CM?
It looked to me, from reading the information you gave us, that Green Thumb says that organic products just aren't gonna work in our cold weather and Natural Lawn Care, Goddles, Goodalls, I'm not sure how you say that title, seems to think that they will. And I noticed also that the Natural Lawn Care Company talks about aeration and overseeding and Green Thumb says it's not necessary, which is strange because I thought when we talked about natural or more organic products for lawns, that that was part of the process for getting rid of weeds, was aeration and overseeding to, to have the grass take over where weeds were, so.
I think it's possibly two different schools of thought.
Yep. I think so too. Personally, I'd like to see us try the, the non-chemical one for at least a, a contract period and see how it goes. And if we aren't happy with it, we, you know, have too many grubs or maybe even a couple of years. I think they said it was a process to, to get that to overtake.
That's correct, it takes approximately two to three years really to get the good quality lawn.
Where the cost isn't that significant in the difference. And I think that there are a lot of, I've heard from a lot of folks, especially in our parks and on our ball fields, that parents would rather we didn't have the chemical sprays if we don't have to. It's clearly better for our water systems and the watershed and everything else if we can avoid it if possible. And I think that it would be good to try it and see what we think.
Tammy, uh, excuse me.
Ms. Mo?
Ms., Ms. Deputy City Manager slash Finance Director. Do you happen to have compiled this so you can tell the difference price-wise between the two companies?
Well, in order to compare apples to apples, because on the RFP, we provided a minimum requirement. And so that's basically kind of the, the numbers that I used. So. It's about eighty-three hundred for Green Thumb and about eleven-six for Natural Lawn Care, if you took and made all the applications exactly the same. So there was some difference with its Green Thumb, they're recommending four applications of fertilizer a year rather than three. So again, I, I had to pull out a bunch of information so that you could really see the price difference.
It was thirty-three hundred dollars difference.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Council meeting.
Economically, it makes sense to go with Green Thumb. We had a person talk about green Ellsworth a little while ago. We generally use way too much pesticide, we use way too much fertilizer. Anything that we can do to try to cut down on those things, I think would be a very good thing to do. I will support you in the request to go with a natural, a more natural way of handling our green spaces.
Well, I can tell you every time I go to put chemicals on my lawn, my marine biologist daughter reminds me that her fish will be eating that stuff in a few more weeks because it'll get in the river. So I think it's worth a try.
Save the trout.
Is it a one-year?
It is one year with up to four one-year extensions.
On, exten- extensions on our part or on?
We choose to extend the contract for up to four more years after the first contract, after the first year.
At this time next year, I'll be coming back to you if we'd like to continue with our services.
Is the price fixed for those four years? Or do we go back out and have them rebid it after the first year?
Sure, I don't think we need to rebid it, but I may need to get pricing.
But will they, they have the option of adjusting their prices after the first year?
That chemicals could go up.
Sorry, we would need to look at the RFP, I don't know.
That's okay, team, I just, I mean, Mrs. Mo.
My standing is that it, we could get new pricing and that would be presented to you when it came back to you.
Okay.
This includes the ball fields?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
They listed right here, it's City Hall, Merrill Park, SK Whiting Park, Harbor Park, Triangle at the Meyer, Wilson Field, the league softball field, the league baseball field, the men's softball field.
What about the bike pit path?
It's asphalt.
Chemicals. Well, so will the roads, asphalt too, but.
I didn't include it on there because it's a different type of treatment that we're looking for on, on the bike pit trail.
Weeds are weeds.
But I, we go in there with a different type, we, the company would go in there with a different type of application that really kills everything in the block area. So that is not included as part of this RFP, this would be additional.
We can ask them if they're interested in doing that and if not, then you can go see someone else.
Yeah, because the, the bike pit path. Since it's been open, has been horrendous for weeds, it looks like the devil in weed season and it seems I'm the only one that notices it or, 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 or cares, I guess.
It's my understanding that we did have that treated last year once and perhaps twice?
We.
At least once.
At least once.
Once, but it's, you know, when, when, when you walk by and, and weed, well, all right, I'm not that tall, but when weeds are damn near up to here, it, it just visually, it just looks, looks awful.
Much like the sagebrush that goes along the sidewalks, along some of the city trees.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Manager?
I would say from my experience, there's a trade-off in these matters. The, you know, there's a strong case for the more organic, environmentally friendly technique, but you also have to understand that to get that immaculate green area, you know, requires something out of the ordinary. And we may be putting up with more weeds. And certainly, it's gonna take a couple of years for this new system to take root. So there will be some trade-off in my estimation. And, and I, along the bike pit path, I, you know, I have a hard time imagining organic treatments getting to the roots of those weeds. You know, those are difficult areas to manage, you know, along a trail like that. But we'll inquire with, you know, the.
If it works.
Yeah, and find out what might be possible there.
It's, it's a difference of thirty-four hundred dollars. To me, that isn't cheap money. I can go with it now to try it, but I would like to see the, the path included. A lot of people use that path. People with and without kids, I see them on that path in the summertime by the dozens every day. And it, it just, we have. And it just, we have to do something about it.
We would need to contact the Natural Lawn Service to go out there and assess it as well. Also, I wanted to add to Natural Lawn Service, they actually do soil testing to try to determine the best type of materials to use for better, better application.
I'd suggested the best way to handle this was to allow this process to go through. Deputy city manager and city manager, I think, have heard everybody quite clear. I don't think that trail's gonna cost over ten thousand dollars to, to treat, so that it's under their purview without council action. And if Natural Lawns America are capable of doing it, then they can add it on as a separate agreement. Because we don't have that information in front of us this evening. So is anyone looking to take a, make a motion?
I would love to make a motion.
Have at it.
I move to approve the request of the deputy city manager and finance director to award lawn treatment services contract to Goodall Landscaping and Natural Lawn of Americas per the attached per-unit slash application pricing.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
You need the CO number in that or not? The motion? Madam clerk, no?
The clerk heard her clearly state the council order number.
I, I, I agree with the motion. The only thing I want to be sure is that Council Blanchett's request is, is recognized, and the staff has heard what we want you to do with that. We're okay with everything.
Thank you.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor? Thank you much.